First item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minutes of June 12, 2018.
I'll make a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Any corrections? Changes? All in favor of the approval of the regular minutes of June 12, 2018, can you say aye?
Aye.
And opposed nay? And I will abstain?
I will abstain. No wait, so I can't actually second it.
How many extensions have we got?
I have two.
You have to?
Yeah.
Alright, so we can't approve. So we all have to wait and approve.
Yeah, you can just send the wish is fine.
Okay. Huh?
It's on people's extensions about, right?
But we have, yeah, but we have...
I wasn't paying attention when I said I seconded it because I have to abstain. You have to abstain, you have to abstain, so that leaves two people.
Right, so I'll second it. So Jay will second it, but I'm not sure that we can approve them without a majority of the people who are actually here for that meeting.
Well, were these three here?
I was not here. I was talking to...
Jasmine will be here later, I think.
Jasmine's not here.
Yeah, put it up.
We'll hold it till the end and if Jasmine comes over we can do it.
Who are you going to march?
Yeah, we'll talk again. Alright. Dean, you're back on. Is that true? I'm not sure, um, is it necessary?
She's gonna talk to Karen.
Yeah, I think she needs to get enough data.
Sure.
Probably enough to see summary of what we're looking at here. I mean, from you maybe you'd better...
Sure, absolutely. Karen, we were discussing, um, we were discussing the facilities improvements measures that the school system is looking at, two including, uh, propane conversions for the elementary school. Get rid of that oil tank, because I know that's immediately... Yeah, there's actually a whisper there. A new building management system, a digital management system to replace the older pneumatic hybrid system that Mark's currently using, that there are clearly are nominal issues with. And then to do the rest of the facilities improvements measures that include insulation, uh, and... Let's see, yeah, windows.
Maybe conversion of propane.
Yeah, conversion of propane for the schools, and also looking at the possibility of solar power as well. To offset recurrent electric costs. One of the things that I discussed, and I'll try to do this for a week, thousand four hundred years, is that Debbie had come to me, as we got to know Debbie, as we last week, and we had started the conversation and the conversation had been around performance contracts specifically. And performance contracting, if, I don't know how confident you are with performance contracting. So basically, performance contracting, and what we would say is actually guaranteed performance contracting. Johns Controls would do, based on an assessment of the schools, and they would put together a proposal, proposed facilities improvement measures. And based on those savings, we would use those savings to fund the ongoing project. The term of the project generally ranges anywhere from fifteen to twenty years. Because the school system had already engaged in a lighting retrofit, we're really looking at a twenty year term. That conversation is around specifically that lighting has a very high return on investment. It's a very quick payback. So usually in a performance contract, the lighting helps to absorb other measures that have much longer paybacks. The oil conversion, the propane, the solar conversion. Unfortunately, solar and the answer, it's not where we all love it to be. If we live in a modern, much different conversation. We want to look at some very creative ways to get that as part of the project, including looking at that, and looking at things like different financing alternatives. Power purchase agreements where we have a third party that actually owns the solar array and you take advantage of the rate savings. Based on that type of, uh, of a workable solution, we actually modeled reducing the electrical rate now, which is fourteen cents a hour on the tank. That's pretty substantial. So, coming back to the larger conversation, it is really about looking at all of the facility improvements that the school system wants, that we're going to do to upgrade the infrastructure of the school system. And then we find the best budgeting control funding vehicle to bring that forward. Performance contracting is a fairly broad term, and we'll look at combining other finance models. We're going to see what we can do to maximize the most amount of measures we can definitely store. With a performance contractor, really is all about doing one big project and getting everything out of there so you can finance everything and get that through the twenty year term. And through a performance contract, that cash flow over twenty years becomes neutral all the time.
And how many, just to say again, coming in, you know, and how many factors do you think are involved in this?
Oh, Johns Controls has been around since nineteen...
Excellent.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, the...
Nineteen, oh, we're good.
The quick story I told everybody else is our home office is in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Dr. Warren Johnson actually was the inventor of the electric thermostat.
Oh, okay.
The very first electric thermostat is still running to this day in the oldest hotel in Milwaukee at the Fisher Hotel. It sits in a gillen cage behind the front desk, and it still runs, it still runs the temperature for the lot. So, something we're, you know, the company's very proud of, Johns Controls is very well established. In terms of performance contracting, Johns Controls created a performance contracting model back around nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-one. So we were actually the first company to introduce performance contracting to case itself schools. And that, I mean, we can get into a big history lesson with a big Johns Controls process.
History, you know, too, with Dean had said that you and that last week, that conversations with Johnson Controls go back almost a year.
Yeah. Yeah, my, my predecessor started this conversation.
Yeah, right, right.
So, I'm continuing, I'm new, I'm new to your process, but the process is really long, so I'm getting caught up as fast as I possibly can. To me, it's an exciting opportunity to be here and working with us. This is the, this actually is the most fun part of my job. The number part, that's, I like the, let the financial guys handle the numbers, and I like the engineers handling the Excel spreadsheets.
Good, thank you.
Well, thanks, Dean, thanks for your time. I mean, you're welcome to stick around and enjoy all this excitement, or you can go enjoy the weather. It's up to you.
I wouldn't mind sticking around for a little while.
Okay. Communication, any correspondence?
No.
And reports? First is the business administration's report. I know Deb's not here.
What you did include in your packet was the adequacy?
Yep, yep, the adequacy.
And it shows there are two different forms. One, one form is the actual communities and how much money they did get in refunds. The other is how it's broken down. You have your, you know, your special education students. You have your, who are at a certain level of reading, and then you have your free and reduced, um, students. And then those were the numbers that were wrong. So those numbers were off, and the total is off. So, so Woodstock did get thirteen hundred.
Lincoln's not here.
Lincoln doesn't get adequacy anyway, at Iowa. So, it's just Woodstock.
I have a question, correspondence, actually. Have we heard anything yet about when that ten million for security is going to be open and available? The last time before that you didn't know when, but I thought I saw it last week on the news that one in RIT said it was available.
It is open. I was just at a meeting this morning and they go through nothing, so we will be sending in some more.
Okay.
Adding some more items.
That's the, the same funding you were using for the vestibules and the second round system and stuff, but just more?
Yeah, I think it's a more, yeah, second round, yeah.
Okay. Do we know, you have an idea of what you're going to be asking to use it for?
We're going to go through what we've, we've already put in for, yeah, we'll be going through it now. It's a little more explicit in there, and they're getting into the details of actual only safety, some of the things that we would throw in.
So the last time you talked about you just didn't know what the parameters are, have they...
Right, right.
Have they business specifics at this point?
It's almost, it's almost like they've kind of learned a little bit as well through the process, like they've opened, I'm saying...
I'm sure it went fast last time.
Right, and I think once they got, we were getting requests coming in, once they saw the request, they were able to kind of say, no, that's not what we meant. And that's what we didn't mean. So the second round is much more, is more specific.
Yeah.
So you think there's a learning curve in both things.
Not such a large swath of requests. Superdance report, ready?
Okay, we do have a, in the act, your board action items, I do have reservations, so I can go through that. I have to explain at the end of that process what that, what this resignation warrant tape and how it will impact the district. Let's see, I did put in the strategic plan, not the strategic plan, sorry, your goals.
The goals, yeah.
And if you could just go through those and see if I missed something when I, you know, when I put them in. I put in some more objectives to go along with the goals, and if I... We have the one that was already in there, and I wanted to know if it was strong enough, is your technology website. It is in there, but I don't know if it's in a strong enough place.
When I looked towards, I thought, I thought it was fine. I just, I wouldn't want to move anything until Tony and Jasmine were back to their part of that meeting. I think you guys are okay with that. If everybody's okay with that, huh?
No, that's fine.
We did talk about some of the stuff.
There's no, there's no deadline that we have to have, it's a two to five, or whatever.
No, no.
So we can wait until July.
Right. The, the Durham Bus Company, we will be meeting with them. I mean, only as we do with any of the contract services that you have, we meet with them on an annual basis. And we do have a list of concerns that we will be moving forward with, with the company, and see if there are any other options, and, and what the next steps can be.
We'll talk about that on the interview too.
Yeah, okay.
Is that too, is that going to potentially include looking to recoup some of the costs that the district cut or outlayed that probably should have been covered by them last year, I mean?
I think that would be part of the conversation.
Okay.
Do we want to hold that? It's on continuing business? We're going to have a more, uh, discussion, a little more depth then? Do we want to...
Oh, yeah, we could do that later.
Yeah, that's a value made. We could do it whenever.
Okay, we just did the monies to the state. That was explained, but I just explained because I don't remember.
Food service?
Food service. And then the action items, we can, uh, move forward at the action. That's it. Oh, there is one thing on the policies, and I apologize to the policy committee, um, for not bringing this forward, that just came to our attention last week, was on one of the policies I did put in at the first meeting. Was, uh, policy JLCG, exclusion of students from school for illness, from school.
Right, just because the temperature was wrong?
Correct, I changed the, um, when the temperature of the child, when the child is ill, was a request to change the temperature. So I did, that was the only change we did.
Where was that, where did that request come from?
Nurse.
Oh. So that's like a clinically significant error, not...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah. So is this, is this something for the parents to, for at home, for the kids in?
Yeah, it's when, it's when they, um, it's, you know, if, if the nurse can take their temperature, yeah.
So this is the, uh, type of thing that we need to get done, so it can be included in our new handbook?
Yeah, we just want to put it in the student handbook. The student handbook, excuse me, the student handbook, you will be receiving a copy electronically for the student handbook. We are using a different company for that. So that will be coming to you electronically as soon as we finish updating all of the policies, and, um...
These three tonight, the meetings?
Yeah, these are the ones we're going in.
So they're on first, we're going to have to approve them.
Right, right, and then we, yeah, and then we'll, we'll continue with the process, correct?
And the, I mean, the policy committees now have some pretty in-depth discussions about a lot of changes that we've made, so I can ask some questions about...
No, I didn't have any questions, I just know the formality is, tonight is...
We can still have a question.
People can add stuff.
Yeah.
You guys are, you guys comfortable with all of that?
This is what you guys have written?
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we made a fair amount of changes, specifically with the sexual harassment policy. The sexual harassment policy was, was, was real thin, and so we basically mirrored the bullying policy and the sexual harassment policy, so that there's a clear protocol for administration, for what they're supposed to do, and who they're supposed to tell, and how it's supposed to, information's supposed to be dispersed, and when and to, so, you know, it was basically, uh... The sexual harassment policy in particular seemed very thin in comparison to the bullying policy, and it all seems... So we, so we did make some pretty significant changes. But there's a, I think these are the recommendations that we would make to the changes.
Scott? Thanks, Matt.
Just a couple things. Pratt, the Pratt Institute began their 2018 session today with students. They have sixty-one students who are participating this year. It is their highest number. They've had people here for their summer session. They arrived, the Pratt Institute students, they arrived, who were coming up from New York, came on, arrived and started their sessions on Monday with our, with our students beginning the program today. So they'll be here from now until July thirteenth, be in the building, in and out, so it's kind of a cool, two and a half week program.
Yep.
That could support us bidding. Some things we've already kind of touched upon already tonight, obviously our flooring, and our flooring project is well underway. Really encourage you guys to go take a look, complete the flooring outside of the, some minor kind of touch of stuff outside here in the elementary, as well as the floor in the high school, Noah High School NPR has been stripped down. We're just waiting for some of the material to come in. Mark reported that July, July seventh is the date it's going to be coming in. Thank you. Our comp is in here working on their cabling and working the cabling project as well as our cameras. They're working on, I mean, our own time, I've given a report up, it's going well for that project as well. And our summer school session begins on Monday, July ninth.
Any questions for Scott? No, thanks, Scott. Okay, committee reports. So I guess we move with policy first, Jay, if you can start?
Uh, we haven't had a meeting since the last meeting, so nothing new to report.
Nothing new, just the first meeting?
Yeah, just the first meeting.
Food service?
I'll accept the motion to move policy JLCG, JIKK, JBAA to second meeting.
I'll make it.
Second?
I will second that.
That's fine. Any further discussions or questions for Jay regarding these changes?
And the only thing that you'll see differently in the next one is the form, the forms, at the, at the end.
Yep.
The formatting is a little off, so, because we're cutting and pasting from one, you know, program to another, so lines are off.
Yeah.
On the, on the, in this one, you said, are you going to, the next one you'll see...
We're not changing anything, no, it's just that, we want to make sure that...
You're going to fix the formatting, or is that what you've got?
That it's going to look like the original.
Yeah. So that was another thing that we sort of, um, that we looked at in, in not just the, the actual policy itself, but also the form that either Scott or Judy is going to use, you know, depending on whether it's the bullying, because that's Scott, and then the sexual harassment would be Judy, or somebody that she designates. The form that they used was a little bit confusing. We added some things to it, and we also cleared up some discrepancies between the policy and the form, and, and so that, I think that's why there's, the formatting is a little bit weird. But we did the best we could to match the form to the policy, so that when Scott's looking at the forms to determine how much time he has to complete his report and get it submitted, and when he needs to report to the parents and all of that stuff. That's all consistent, the form's consistent with the, with the, with the policy. And I think we actually created, basically we created our own form with respect to sexual harassment, which is almost identical to the bullying, because that form didn't exist. So we basically just used the bullying form, adopted it for the sexual harassment policy to include the, all of the other, you know, the caveats of the sexual harassment policy.
A lot of mirror in between the two.
Yes, they're, they're pretty much identical now, except for where they, where there are obvious, there's obvious differences. But the idea was, um, the bullying policy was robust, and, and it set pretty clear expectations. Sexual harassment policy wasn't like that. We decided to make them almost identical to the extent that we could, you know, for consistency.
Much easier to manage with consistency too.
Exactly, right.
Alright, well, thanks. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay, the extensions. So we will move those policies to second meeting for our next meeting. Brian, if you please.
Scott touched on some of the stuff we talked about with the floors, so the floors are making their way to be done. We're just waiting for some finished work up here, and some pool line painted tiles that are being shipped out, and we'll be able to finish the school down, the high school. Couple other things we touched on was, um, the gate in the back path going out to Pollard, is then cemented in, but the gate's not up, but should be up pretty soon. Composed, post Serena, come on in.
Yeah. Is Mark doing that? Who's doing that?
Yes.
Oh, Mark's doing that.
He pulls that door up.
Yeah.
Um, Mark just updated that he also, they did a bunch of moving classrooms, painting classrooms. So at least three classes have been moved and repainted. The EC compressor that everybody knows is down is out for bid with three contractors. The trees are out to bid with three arborists. And then he wanted me to, do I have to direct you to make the auction?
Yeah, I remember all the motions, so I can...
You want to do it?
Yeah, you just want to talk about what it is.
So we're going to be auctioning off a three-phase hundred gallon compressor that used to run the pneumatic systems. It's just not being used currently, and it takes up space. As well as two four-tier bleacher sets that they're just upgrading because they're wood, old. I think they're similar to the ones that used to be out by the front road there. And then the big thing was, we had Dean here from Johnson Controls just give us a little rundown of what we're looking at. You know, what we're hoping to do is, you know, have a performance contractor come in to handle this project that we all, no needs to get done with changing the heat, and looking at the windows and insulation and all the different processes that go on with that, making, you know, one complete envelope, as opposed to where I think we were going before, was kind of just fixing things one at a time. We brought up a few different things that, you know, we can look for going on with that, which is the, you know, idea of maybe solar, as well as, um, just looking at, you know, is this a viable piece of earth for geothermal? You know, but that's something that we would look at down the road once the performance contractor came in, and they'd have their analysts pretty much look at that stuff. That covers what we discussed, and from that, we're just going to... That's, were you going to include that?
Yeah, I've got two different ones, yeah.
So you'll include the Johnson Controls as well?
Yeah. Okay. Um, so I'll make a motion to put the three-phase hundred gallon air compressor, and both of our four-tier wood exterior features, like for posting for auction.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the extensions? That motion counts?
Then I'll make a motion to authorize administration to develop an RFQ slash RFP in order to post it.
For the performance contract?
Sorry, for the performance contract.
I'll second that, Joe.
Thanks, Jay. Does anybody else have any more questions on that? No? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, extensions? And that motion counts?
So, can I just ask one question about that, not, not that it has anything to do with whether or not we're going to authorize them to do it, but is that, do we get to look at that before it goes out, or is that something that you are going to develop and send out without any further review, or is that, how's that going to work?
We're going to develop it and send it out, and maybe support, you know, any, any happens.
To make sure the scope of work is with the board.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
You could go up via email, right?
I can send it out.
And then if anyone has any questions...
At least we, like, so we can just look at it.
At least there wouldn't slow the process of, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not looking to do that, I'm just, you know, just to see...
What it looks like.
Yeah, what it looks like.
Yeah, I wouldn't want you, I wouldn't want you folks to endorse anything you have, so...
Yeah.
I would say just, sometimes we get stuff together and ask people to stop by if they have...
I mean, it's, I don't, I don't, and if it gets to a point where there's concerns or questions from, excuse me, from enough people, it would require a discussion at the board level to then move it forward. We can't, we can't have the conversations and discussions through email. Yeah, I mean, I think it would be a review, and if there's gen, general generic questions, then they can go back to administration, but if there was something more to be mentioned, we should ask to be put on the next agenda of this kind of department.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that come up if we know what that means.
Yeah, we have your name and number.
No difficulty. So if the number goes off.
That's not good.
We don't know. I've got the call at three o'clock in the morning, so it happens.
Any other committees meet? Do they have anything they want to share?
Oh, I can just share real quick, let me see if you can move it up there. Deb and I met with Frank Westby, who's the, the Red Bull Cafe Services, for our food services. He run over the, one of the food service, just how it went for this coming, this past year. Talked about, there was some changes in there, I believe the minutes are also in your, in your packet for this past session. Just talked about the, the contract renewal, some of the different programs that we were doing. You know, breakfast after the bell, there was a, a request to add a breakfast sandwich or hot item from the elementary school. So this, he's going to be looking to add some of those things in. Just updated him as far as our break times, as far as our bell schedule. There will still be times during the middle, middle morning where kids could be able to come in and access some of that from, from Jack, because I know there's some times where kids would get something after around the nine, at thirty, time slot. There was, there was a, the state's request, the menu has a civil rights statement, so, you know, Frank's to be looking into that. Also, just the, the, once again, the flooring project was part of the discussion, as it is in the NPR. So that is something we had a discussion as far as how far the form would go, how it impacts the kitchen, does it, is it not? Did talk about equipment needs, so we can start planning for the nineteen-twenty budget session. Also, I communicated with Jack regarding in-service dates, and we're going to meet with Frank again from the vault. So pretty, you know, we, he really kind of reiterated that we're in a really good place. Feel really good about the year we had, but also kind of the services that we're providing. So Frank is great at it, so we...
And you feel pretty strongly about number, pull up number five, online payments and account information, that that's going to be?
Yeah, that was, that was one of the things that, that's going to be, we're going to be looking at and kind of working towards. That was something that, you know, we're looking to kind of work with, work with capital services to put in. And one of the things that we communicated with them was, you know, when we have a lot of the online, because they are pushing more and more to be online, and like where your menus are going to be, you know, shown and all this. And so it's, it's interesting, and then where, the next question that you tend to get from parents, and justifiably so, is, so can I pay there too?
Right.
You know, and it's, and, and...
So you can preload your...
You can preload it, you can see the account. He talks about even getting down to the, you know, if your child is what they're buying. So it's a, you get the receipt, which is online, you can see, so there's no more discussion of, I don't know where my lunch money went.
Right.
If they, you know...
That's where it went, mom.
That's where it went, mom. That's what it was, like, how many cookies did you buy, so...
That's a little Big Brother-ish.
It is, but it's, it's also, it's also one of those things that we've, we've kind of talked about. It's with food service, like, in no other place in our school do we take cash, put it in an envelope, give it to an eight-year-old, bring it to somebody else who brings it to somebody else, and then gives it to Jack in line.
I think the administration of the system, you know, the savings on that end to administer... I think the administration of the system, you know, the, the savings on that end to administer and go away from the check or cash system is valuable. I mean, I like J M, I might, like, you know, you know, everything that they're buying, but it would be nice, I think, on your end of things.
Sure.
Schools end up having to be dealing with.
And, and, and as someone who stands next to Mr. Marshall on a daily basis as he's taking money on the days that comes in, it's, it's, I don't, I don't talk to him for about five to ten minutes.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot that he's gotta do.
Yeah, it's a bit rushed, there's a lot that's going on.
Absolutely, absolutely. So there's a really good conversation that we're looking to move forward with.
Is that something where, like, they could send out an alert to a family if, like, funds were getting low or something like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Push the messaging or something.
Yeah, and, you know, like, send out a, an email through that, and it's like, hey, this is what's coming up for lunch.
Right.
Your kid's got enough for, to get him through jobs.
Yeah, and, and we didn't get into the exact details of how that would work, but, I mean, that's the, the idea that that would, that would be there, and so what happens is, cause, you know, in, in the policy we have, we won't, we can't deny a, a child, you know, a meal, but what is, what their options are will diminish, can come down. So I think it's one of those that, you know, you don't want the conversation of that being a surprise, like, if I could have that, blah, blah, blah. So I think that's, you know, our ways of, how we'll be proactive.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other committees? Business requiring board action, nominations, recommendations, and resignations.
I have a resignation from Diane Nowar, she is your first grade teacher. And I would also recommend it to.
Diane.
Danielle, did I say Diane? Sorry, Danielle, Danielle Nowar.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Danielle Nowar as first grade teacher.
I'll second.
Any discussions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Extentions, that motion carries.
Uh, also, the, uh, accepted resignation for Kinsey Nickel, who's a paraprofessional.
Make a motion to accept the resignation letter of Kinsey Nickel, who's an elementary paraprofessional.
A librarian, a support staff, a librarian.
Oh, sorry.
But a paraprofessional.
Second.
That's true. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Extentions, that motion carries.
Okay, what we, I'm just gonna give you the list of advisors of the, of the different groups that are up there. We have F P L A advisors, Melissa Saborn and Kim Pickering. Student council is Brenda Vance and Fay Clark.
We can throw on those as a group break.
Yep, as presented.
Okay. Oh, I don't think we, do we bother with advisors anymore?
Oh, no, 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 sorry.
We don't, okay.
Just, just be F Y I.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, due to your resignation in first grade, uh, we did have to post that, because we were a junior employer, and we posted it within first, followed the process of the C B A, and you did have a, a person within your district that did, uh, apply for that position. Rebecca Manning did apply, which only means that we remove her from one position to another. Rebecca was the co-teacher going into the lower grades, depending on the test, we basically, depending on the test scores and the supportive needs of the students. So Rebecca Manning had, had asked if she could be moved to first grade, which we do movements a lot, and, um, she did have a meeting with Scott and Ginny, and then she came up and, and met with, met with me as well, and, you know, we made, we made that movement. As far as the co-teaching position, I am recommending to the board that we do not fill that position at this time because of the new program that's coming in. We are, the students that are need and support will be getting that support, um, through the other program as well as with their support staff forcing.
That's why the co-teacher was.
And that's what the co-teacher was, you know, working with the, uh, classroom teacher.
Yep.
The co-teacher with the, with the extended support for the classroom. So at this point in time, I'd, I'd like to, to recommend to the board not, just don't, you know, we're just not gonna fill that position at this time.
But do we have the ability that if we, if it's deemed necessary during school year that we need this?
Exactly, so.
I'll accept the motion to approve Rebecca Manning as the first grade teacher.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and I will stay.
And could we just have a vote on the, um, on the co-teacher? That we will not be filling that position at this time, or if we need arises? Just so we have that in mind.
I'm making a motion to accept the administration's recommendation that we not fill, fill the co-teacher position at this time.
I'll second. All, oh, any further discussion on that? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Extentions, and that motion carries. Anyway, any other resignations, recommendations? Continuing business, uh, we've already touched on school board goals, air conditioning, uh, transportation.
That is, you know.
And we discussed that, and I don't know, Jay, you had some question.
No, that, that was it, as far as, my question was just that, like, what are we looking to address at that meeting, which basically just, then we're unsatisfied with what, with what happened last year and, you know, sort of expectations going forward. And then maybe, uh, if we do use them again, then, then, you know, some consideration for the money that we paid, that, for stuff that should've been included in, in the contract services.
Correct, and we do have a list of all the different, um, items that, that did not meet the needs of the district, um, contracting that, and, and.
So we have an idea.
Communicating with them.
Okay, I, I'm just thinking like a sort of bridge of contract type, type operation, like, if we have an idea of like what, how much money we're out as a district as a result of their failure to fulfill the needs.
Correct, we do have our documentation.
In addition, I, you know, because they've, you said, in the discussion a while back, you said they've acknowledged that they haven't fulfilled the contract.
Yeah, and it is, there is, there is wording in the contract, so.
Just because of that, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, I, I would be in favor of, just to figure out if it's gonna happen again, I'd be in favor of directing administration to, at least investigate other alternative contracts with, um, you know, J P I's servicing us. I just, I would like to know from someone else, and our first students, just more of a fear, this is what we need, what can we do, so that we have something lined up. If we don't, we don't know what that conversation's gonna be.
Yeah, we can certainly, that was part of the.
Who are the other alternative, who are the other, um, service providers in the area, that service that would potentially service this area to this district?
Uh, J P I as well.
J P I.
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be one of the top of the list.
They've been working with us, so, J P I was the one who, um, serviced, you know, helped us out a lot this year with our, with our after-school and just got tripped.
Yeah, yeah, they have to respect.
Is, is, uh, is it G W Berry? With the turn of Lancaster, is that something, is that, are they too far away, is that?
You'd have to reach out and ask.
Yeah, we'd have to, I mean, whatever's put on.
I was gonna say, is that something that we would need to authorize, like, an, an R three four?
Yeah, 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 that's what we were do, ended up doing, it, it, we was done with.
Okay, well, I guess the question is how, when's our contract up with Durham?
We have two more hours.
Oh, okay, I mean, there, but there has to be like sort of a.
There's gotta be an out.
If you breach, we're, okay.
Right.
I think we've reached.
There is wording for that, right.
If, if you want to say.
My recommendation would look to, to go along with what the board is requesting the admin to do is to, as we always do, we, we review the contract with, with the contractual agencies at the end of every year, and then if there are issues and we need to move forward with different, in a different direction, we would certainly come back to the board.
So based on their responses to our concerns during that, during that conversation, you can come back to us about something.
Right, and, and then we would be able to move forward, but not move forward to the point where we would come to you with the information to move forward with, and then you would have to, you would be needing to vote on that. We would be making new decisions.
My only concern is if it's, if, if that happens and there are still concerns and they can't fulfill the rest of the contract term, is the middle of July, too late to start reaching out to other companies.
Um.
It is hard to reach out and just say this is the one we're looking for.
Right, and we could certainly, we'll look into that and see what the timeline is and I'll, we'll get all those details, um, prior to having.
Do you know when the meeting, do you have a scheduled meeting?
No.
Okay, so that's something that's.
It will be in July though.
Will be.
I, I think we must actually have, so contract proposals in hand, so we can jump on right by.
Right, 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 you may have to do that, yeah, have it ready to go, so that we can have a smooth transition if that be the case.
You know, I mean, if we have something lined up, that's more leverage and if we're talking to them, saying like, look, we're not satisfied with the services, uh, we've already investigated, um, replacing you because of the level of, of service that you provided last year, um, we have, you know, it's a hollow threat if we don't have something else lined up, you know, and particularly the bus company may, you know, may know that, like, oh, uh, good luck at the end of July, what, you know, getting a bus company lined up for the next school year, and so they may sort of have, or feel like they have the upper hand, but if we have something saying like, look, this other company is willing to step up and take over the contract, what are you gonna do for us, sort of that?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
We can vote if the rest, administration do that.
I would, I would.
I'll make a motion to direct administration to reach out to other transportation companies in the area to see what type of transportation contracts they can offer us.
I'll second.
Any more discussion, questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Extentions. I think that would only make sense to have that during that conversation instead of having to go after it if we're not satisfied with the conversation.
Right.
I mean, you know, best case scenario, we just continue to move along with them, they acknowledge and they have solutions to the challenges that we, you know, let face.
That would be the best.
Right, right, and if not, we can say, well, you know.
Exactly.
Sorry, we can have other options and, and we don't wanna talk to them.
Brian, are you on transportation?
Yeah.
This isn't a discussion.
What's that?
We, we didn't have, this, this, this all came about post our meeting.
Right, yeah.
But I'm up to take and get on board with it.
Yeah.
So, what was the end of, so, no student, no staff, community?
Yeah, I have a question for you. Um, so, maybe to get you, you authorized to go over the R F Q, and you mentioned the scope of services, I've sat here through it. What is the scope of services, just to come back, whatever you can come back with, with energy savings and, you know, made it sound like there was a direct scope of services. And I did get that impression during the first facility meeting.
Sure, I, well, from what I heard, I mean, as far as, and I think there's some flexibility on what that would, we need to let them know exactly what we're looking for, what they come back with, there's some flexibility in that, but we were discussing, um, the tank, uh, conversion to propane, the new V M S system, mechanical system, control system, um, potential for solar, uh, installation. Insulation upgrades, tying the two buildings together, potentially having the two different, discussing having the two different systems.
Yeah, I, I, I heard that bouncing around, and that's what I've kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's where we're at.
I got the one that was done last August, so, you know.
Right, so, same, same. And the possibility, potential maybe investing in geothermal as well, and then whatever they come back.
Yeah, geothermal was new, so, I mean, that's something we wanna investigate and make sure if it's, it's cost efficient to do it, and has a good payback, then certainly we make a recommendation to do it.
So, is it kind of more open that, you know, somebody like Jay said, I come in and pour the building and say, well, you know, this year it makes more sense to do something too, that's also kind of that.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think there's, there's some flexibility in that, where I might have a different perspective on what would be best, and then we take a look at it all.
I'm just.
That's the way I understand it.
I'm trying to determine if you start as, uh, scope work, paint this room blue.
No, I'm hoping, not that I'm hoping, but I'm hoping to an extent that like that happens, that someone comes back and maybe missed something, but.
Right.
It could be, like, T T L's coming back, but it's, it's pretty broad on what the.
Right, that's. Well, that's what I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually, usually what happens is, you know, the school has some recommendations, say, these are the things that we're very interested in.
Right.
But when you give each vendor the opportunity to walk through and do that.
Well, that's what I want to know, make sure they have opportunity.
You do your own preliminary study, and then each vendor will come in and say, you know, you feel very strongly that you could also do this, this, and this.
Right, that's what I want to know, was you, you weren't, you know, stuck on just two or three of those items.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a process, I mean, when we go through between what happens now and you get to the point of contract issuance, there's gonna be multiple, and we're talking fifteen to twenty different discussions about, you know, what's gonna happen and what that scope, but that scope will change for each discussion. Um, and, and the, the goal is always to refine and enhance things, so when you get down to the point where we're writing a contract and say, this is what we're gonna do with you for the next twenty years, we know exactly what's happening.
Let's start to trim it all down.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great, that's a, appreciate you asking.
Two things or something.
Yeah.
You, you just, um, talked about going out for the bus service, will there be a, um, again, scope of work or a list of services needed? That's gonna be developed in the S V U.
As far as what our needs are as a district, yeah, I, I think so, and they, they fell short this time, so we, we'll be pretty clear on what our expectations are.
So if somebody wants to stop and pick one up, it'll be three or so, I mean, next week's holiday, but soon, the way they talk in.
I don't know, I don't know what the timeline on that would be.
We need to have, have a meeting sometime in the week, of course, I have it scheduled, that will be in the week of July.
They're gonna have a, sounds like they're gonna have a transportation meeting first, uh, go over that.
Week of July night, there's gonna be a transportation meeting.
Yep. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask was, seven, eight years ago, we, um, as Boyd, um, initiated the process of putting the electric water heaters in the high school, one school was out.
Summer, yeah.
And I noticed the oil was still running in the other classroom, in the last weeks. I mean, that was an energy saving measure, and last year it never even happened. And I see it hasn't happened yet.
I, I don't have an answer, I mean.
I really don't.
I don't know, I mean.
No, I know you don't, that's why.
Was that, uh, was that written as something that, was that a discussion or was that a?
No, we, 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 we put in one to buy.
We put in specifically for what we would use for the programs that were being run down there instead of having.
You've got to run it with dinosaurs.
So, so, so like, if it's not happening, then it's, but it's a rule, like, not a rule, but it's a.
No, no, it's not a rule.
But I'm saying, there was a plan in place, it, it wasn't a, it wasn't a talk around a table.
It's a best practice. It's a best practice.
Okay.
We have the heaters down there, they were here.
Okay.
It's all in there, it's all in place.
So we could have Judy and Scott just look into that, and if there's a reason why it's not happening, then let's at least have it.
Oh, and the other question I had, um, probably administration, do we know how many students did meet competency this year?
Yes.
What's that meant so far?
I don't have that information, like, from the provider.
Anything else, Joe? What compressor is that? I'm sorry, what compressor is that, right?
All I was told is this is a big, huge, three-phase compressor sitting in a room.
No, no.
No, no, that's, that's.
The, the A C.
Oh, the A C.
The A C compressor and the, and a coil, that's what we.
Well, so, do we know which one is it?
Oh, I.
I mean, the A C's not out here, am I assuming it's, but this one?
Compressor number.
Compressor number one. Does that mean anything to you?
No.
Oh.
Maybe they got named that. I mean, if the A C unit number one, that'd be the gym unit, or?
Yeah, since the gym, Mark had talked tonight, I think he said compressor on one unit and a coil on the other unit.
The A C units in the, at the stage are still working, and they're, they're heated, they're cooled in the gym.
And those, the ones out on the stage are only supposed to run when the curtains are closed, they're not designed to run all the time.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we're doing that in order to try and protect the floor and all that sort of stuff while we get better basic tests. But I don't know, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and guess, so.
Well, I know, I know, during graduation, the A C on the stage we're running was, where the curtains open. And all that, with the return air for the big unit, all it does is suck all that cold air right out, it really doesn't do anything, it's only designed to run when the curtains are closed. One of the biggest problems in the gym is the exhaust fan isn't even running, so you're trying to cool that air in there all the time, and all that hot air is just sitting there. You need to get the exhaust fan running, but we're gonna burn another one, that's all I got. And, don't we have contracts with you? Or is the contract out, I thought we had contracts with H V A C. Yeah, was it named mechanical? Don't, don't we have contracts with them?
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
Then why aren't they fixing it, they give us discount, they're supposed to have discounted labor and everything, that's the purpose of the contract, they don't take care of that? Again, I'm not, this is specifically to you.
Yeah, I can't. Yeah, I can't answer, I can't answer, but they're good questions to ask, we can have them looked into.
Because that's, I mean, we're talking about bidding that out, but I believe we already have contracts with people to take care of that. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I, I thought, I don't know if that, is maintenance based or if it's replacement based?
Well, either way, we have contracts for those units, they take care of them and they give us a discounted labor and parts to take care of that stuff, it's part of the contract, like, it's a shaking.
If you have a service contract in place, what will happen is, they'll give you a service rate, but anytime they have to come out and do repair, you're getting a discounted rate as well.
Yeah.
So it's usually carried, you know, anywhere from fifteen or twenty or thirty percent.
Yeah, twenty percent.
Cause you're there doing preventative maintenance anyway.
Yeah, I have just one more question, I see you talked about last week, I see you got your brush contract out, but in it, you're still keeping the wood chips on the property, what's the purpose of that? Is anybody know? I mean, they're untreated wood chips, and now they go before green leaves, which are un, un-brown. Is it to try to use it for mulch? I mean, you see what it's done already. In that, in that contract, it says, chips will stay on the property. What were used as wood chips?
Well, untreated one.
Untreated, that's.
Yeah, I, yeah, we don't know.
Probably asked that at the last meeting.
Right, yep.
Do we still have contracts with the best company? You know?
The total.
I did, I'm curious.
Best company?
Best company, yes, we do.
Said we do.
We do. I would have to say that they were probably found upon that, the wood chip, because all it does is run and send. But that's a question to them.
Yeah.
Anything else? Matt?
I hear that the, uh, I hear this, I don't know if it's true, maybe you want to tell me. That the powers got their contracts and the raises that the budget committee and the taxpayers approved were not in. I mean, all of that.
I don't know if that's true or not.
No, it went along with the board to have, have the committee, and the board met with the administration, and there was an arrangement made, and there was an understanding made for what the amounts would be, um, across the board and the process.
Did you hear that?
No, I did not.
So the board, there was a committee that was developed, after that summer money, the twenty-five thousand dollars or whatever it was, came forward. And based on what that committee came forward with, the administration followed those recommendations and that's what it was based on.
Were the board, was the, were board members on that? Was it a board committee?
Yes, two board members and administration.
Okay, well, I think that's intensely arrogant. The taxpayers were well informed why that money was put in the budget and approved that budget based on that information that J.J. Beju, then chairman of the budget committee, presented. And then, for you guys not to follow it, I think, you know, there's, you know, you're just guilty of misfeasance, malfeasance and non-feasance all at once. All right, so, and I think it's highly arrogant, so.
What was the?
Vance, I think you were in, when we were discussing, and you said, I think your words were something to the nature of, if the board didn't follow what the taxpayers warned, I think there would be, you know, it would be very, uh.
I knew I said, I said I would support, I would support, but I wasn't on the committee either.
I, I'm just saying, you did support. You were, you were the, you were the, uh, you were the rep the night we were discussing that, you were the school board rep.
But I, I said I would support it, but.
Yeah, but you led us to believe as a committee, Vance, that the board would support it going through, because we were talking about making a warrant out of it, so this same.
Yeah, that's why I said I would support it, because I can't, I mean, we have a few members in the board, um, I didn't realize there was an agreement actually until tonight, I knew we had a committee, um.
I was.
We, Jay.
I was, Jay, Matt.
Judy. And Deb.
You were a strong pullman of it.
Yep.
Why did you support?
I didn't, and, I mean, I think, is it appropriate to explain what we did? I mean, so essentially what, what ended up happening is we went to the, we looked at the, the, um, what was the classification? No, support staff, so we looked at the support staff in, in total. Um, twenty-five thousand dollars was, was what was appropriated, sixty percent of that was distributed amongst the eight, uh, paraprofessionals. The other forty percent was distributed amongst, uh, I think, ten other members of the sa, of the support staff. Um, and, so, I, I can tell you that part of the reason that I sort of, um, became convinced that that was the right thing to do, uh, included that. I couldn't even realize I didn't really, we didn't really have the whole, full picture in the discussion of the, of the support staff salaries during the course of the board meetings. And one of the biggest things that I learned during the course of the conversation on that committee was, um, that, that when you look at total compensation. For, for the individuals to include benefits, to include, uh, health insurance and all of the other aspects of it. Um, there was actually quite a large discrepancy between, uh, some of the support staff that are full-time and the paraprofessionals that are not full-time. And when you, when you look at the roughly eighteen thousand dollars that the district spends per person on, uh, additional compensation outside of wages. Such as the health insurance packages and everything like that. Um, if you divide that up amongst how much it a, per hour that represents for a full-time employee versus how much per hour that represents for a part-time employee. It's actually about four dollars an hour more for the part-time paraprofessionals in total compensation, so.
And by part-time, you mean someone that's working ten months?
Yeah, not part-time, yeah, right, 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 the school year, the school year employees.
Right, right.
So full, full year, this full school year, yeah.
So essentially, that eighteen thousand dollars split up over the hours a paraprofessional works versus a full-time support staff person works. Represents approximately a four dollar an hour difference based on some of the information, based on the information that we were looking at at the time. Um, so, if you're looking at full-time, uh, the, 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 the sort of discrepancy between, uh, the paraprofessionals' school year. Uh, as opposed to some of the other support staff members, uh, that were, uh, full-time year-round. That total compensation package was actually already, uh, skewed in the direction of the paraprofessionals. That's, then they, and then we added not only the fifty cents an hour raise that was in the budget initially, but then an additional, um, what amounted to being sixty percent of the twenty-five thousand dollars went to, to that. To that specific classification, employee classification of paraprofessional. Um, and then the other, the other sort of classifications in the, um, support staff got a smaller portion of that. It was, it was basically forty percent that was spread out over more people. Uh, so, uh, I certainly, you're absolutely right, I mean, I was, I was a strong supporter, I remain a strong supporter of increasing the, the, um, the, the salaries. I think in the interest of fairness, I, uh, I wasn't entirely informed about the, the full, the, what I would call the total compensation package for all of the employees. Uh, and, and the way that that worked and the way that that sort of broke down by, on a, on an hourly basis and, um, because if you work two thousand hours a year. And you, or you work twelve hundred hours a year, you're still eligible to get that eighteen thousand dollar insurance package. And so, uh, that was something that I didn't realize, I think that that's something that we should factor in, and that was something that we did factor in. Um, but, over, a, as far as being in line with the wishes of, of the town, um, while certainly, uh, I think an argument can fairly be made that. The full twenty-five thousand was, was, uh, I guess, sort of earmarked for that purpose. Um, I mean, I think it was, at least it was clear to me that, that at the hearing when we were discussing that, that there was a fairly, um, stern opposition to the, the, the budget committee making that kind of recommendation. Uh, and, but, a, at the end of the day, the overwhelming majority of the money went to the smaller group of people. Overwhelming majority, sixty percent of the money went to the smaller group of people, they, uh, received a much larger increase than, uh, than, than, than anybody else with, with that money. And additionally, we, we looked at, um, sort of regional, uh.
Paraprofessionals.
Yeah, regional wages for the paraprofessionals, uh, and, um, I think that that put us at the top of the list as far as I could tell. As far, for, for paraprofessionals, we're, we're probably the best paid school on, in the north country as far as paraprofessionals. Like Plymouth was, um, was, was the highest before and, and we, we were, we surpassed that based on the, the fifty cent raise plus the additional, uh, monies that were, that were attributed, so.
Was it a flat raise for all the powers across the board?
No, I think it, well, how do we do that? But it worked out to be.
You were involved in that part of it.
No, based on, um, you know, number years of experience and, you know, through the process of, of how that was.
It wasn't a, it didn't work out that it was a, a flat raise for everybody, I, I can't remember exactly.
Everybody didn't say get a dollar an hour, some people got a dollar, some people got, you know, the.
Yeah, it was more of a percentage-based, uh, increase, so if you were making eleven, um, your raise was gonna be less than if you were already making thirteen, I think. Is how it ended up working out, and I, we, uh, and it escapes me at this point, but it was something that Deb had typed up. Um, sort of, we had talked about the proposal, she typed it up and showed us where everybody would, or where all those employees would be based on their years of service. Um, and, and again, it, it put us, I think, at the top of the stack as far as, uh, parapay in, in the region.
And I think additionally, part of that conversation was with the change in philosophy, um, from, from the budget committee standpoint, seeing that most of you guys are here. Our hope would be, is that if we put an additional twenty-five thousand dollars into next year's budget and, and flip-flop it so that we can switch it the other way. Then it took two years to get to the number that you guys had in mind, and we do it in a way that we find, what we found to be equitable and keeps, keeps everybody in the same, on the same kind of length of.
Yeah, I just wanna make a point to one of the things Jay said, at the budget hearing, there was opposition, but it was board members, there wasn't much public there at all.
Right.
It was, it was board members.
Mm-hmm.
But, there was a high percentage of public at the annual meeting that voted in that, you know, what we, that budget that we presented. All right, so, you know, the board is gonna be the board and that's all we're still, but the people voted in that budget based on what was presented by the chairman at that time. All right, right or wrong, indifferent, whether board members didn't like it or not, all right. I enjoyed serving with you, um, on that budget committee, you brought a lot of good argument to it, you, the way you think, but that's because of your, that's because of your chosen profession, all right? You know, your, you know, and stuff like that, but I'm just saying, I think, I, I just don't agree with it. There's just so much fluff in the budget already, and there's just, now, there's just a little, I don't know if all that money was spent or not.
It was.
Okay, so, I think there's enough slush funds for pizza parties and stuff like that, so, already.
Yeah, and, and as far as I'm aware, all of that twenty-five thousand dollars was, was deployed to, uh.
Employee.
To, to employees in that particular, uh, support staff category. Um, and with the majority of it going to even the more narrow category of paraprofessionals. It's just some additional, I think there was some, um, assistance, library assistance and, and, um, a couple of other, uh, people in that same support staff category that also, um, got. That split forty percent of the, of mine, but as far as I know, and as far as the discussions that the committee had, was, it was the intent to deploy all of the twenty-five thousand dollars. It wasn't hold back forty and stick it in the slush funds, that was not the intent, and as far as I know, not what happened.
Thank you. I just wanna ask you, Jay, you said that were comparable to the, the other districts around us?
So, yeah.
But did you look at the benefit package, because we had talked about that during the, the budget hearing?
Yeah, that was something that we.
We don't have a lot of things that the other districts have, you know, um, you know, longevity day, nursing day, you know, or insurance buyback, stuff, we don't have any of that now. And our benefit package is, and I, I mean, after sitting here for six years, I looked at all that stuff and tried looking out for them, because they have no, um, they're not out of the union, they have no support. You know, we, um, so I, you know, I think you were just looking at dollars and cents, it's probably on an hourly basis.
Sure.
Yes, we're probably higher, but, I mean, we all work in the working world, you can get, uh, take two dollars an hour to be able to save down your professional, skip twenty, but you could have a better benefit package. So, I don't think you went deep enough.
Right, and I'll, I'll tell you, we did look a, a little bit about, of, of the benefits, but as far as like knowing what each district specifically offers, I didn't, I didn't see that. I will say that what we, what we looked at was the hourly rate.
Right.
Um, and, so as far as an hourly rate, we are, we're, we're correct.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, then you put it back, you know, I had him with me that night we talked about, you asked him about chair, I'm like, I said, no.
Yep.
Um, I didn't wanna go there.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna get this deep into it, uh, but I have looked at all the other districts several years ago when I was on the board. Um, trying to, you know, they have nobody advocating for them, they're not part of the union, and I think it was an injustice.
Yeah, yeah, we think that, and I've said this, and I know you, this is your first year on the board, so you haven't heard me say this before. Whenever they wanna compare, they go to that North Country Educational Consortium, I talked about all those districts, none of those districts are like us. Okay, you can't go to Camden and compare because they're part of the, they're part of the SAU that covers plenty, there's too many towns and too many, you can't compare that to us, okay? There is not many SAUs in this state that you can compare us to, because we're a cooperative school district, we're two small towns all by ourselves.
I, I mean, obviously, we're, we're, we're unique, but I mean, I don't think that that, that means that we can't find suitable comparisons and, and for the most part, I mean, whether you. Whether you're, whether you're working as a paraprofessional at Plymouth or whether you're working as a paraprofessional in Groveton or Lincoln, I mean, you're doing a similar job, you're, you're, you know, you're looking at similar costs of living in the, in those areas. And, and that's sort of, I mean, in my mind, the things that would, that matter, I mean, I, you're obviously not paying a paraprofessional the same in Groveton as you are in New York City because of the, the differential, uh, cost of living and, and all things associated with that. But, I mean, as far as comparing, we're never gonna find something that's exactly apples to apples, so we do what, I mean, I think that's a, a fairly good representation and.
But I think you can find something better than going to the North Country Educational Consortium for comparison reasons. You know, they do what they do and they probably help us to a certain extent, all right? But, they have schools from Maine, they have schools on Indian reservations, okay?
Yeah, I think we were just looking at like northern New Hampshire schools, is what it sounded like that we.
What, northern New Hampshire schools or the North Country Educational Consortium?
Yeah, it's basically Plymouth to Florida.
Yeah, I think we need to look at, you know, somebody who runs a school, a K through twelve school, all right? And, you know, I'm not sure we can find one in the state that's the same, and if we do, it's probably down south where the cost of living, you know, down, and by south, I mean, south of Hoxton, Dulles, which is nothing but northern Massachusetts anyway. All right, so, I'm not sure we can get an accurate comparison.
But finding a, finding a rate for somebody to get a job would, and you find comparisons within driving distance of that place. Something that you, you wanna make it competitive to bring people into this area. So we're not gonna look at finding, like he said, a, a comparable that's not feasible, you're not gonna uproot your family to go become a paraprofessional in Nashua for an extra dollar an hour, it doesn't make sense.
We're looking at keep our people here.
Yeah, so. Let's compare to what we have around here, and if we can beat the driving distance in here and be like a competitor here, then we keep people here.
I get it, but if you've got twelve paraprofessionals here, and I, I don't remember the number, how many other?
Eight, I believe.
Eight?
Yeah.
Okay, eight paraprofessionals here.
Was, the eight was the number that they were using in electrical systems.
And then you go to an SAU and you start comparing to these SAU around us that have eighty? That's not an, you know, because they're, they're gonna be a different, that, that's a different animal.
Yeah, I mean, I think we had things at both ends of the spectrum though, I mean, like I said, we have, we were, we were looking at profile, Groveton, Littleton, Gorham, you know, Berlin, all the way down to Plymouth. So you're looking at, um, you know, a, a fairly broad spectrum, schools that are much larger, schools that are roughly the same size, schools that are somewhat smaller. Uh, and, and, you know, I think across the board, we, we, we've positioned ourselves so that we are, as far, at least as far as wages are concerned, are in a better position. Now, benefits, um, you know, certainly I can't speak to that, that were, that were better off benefit-wise, although I, you know, in, in, as far as what I was told, it sounded.
The percentages are, as far as the benefit package, the dental and the health, we were, we were in really good shape there.
Yeah.
As far as some of the deeper benefits, maybe not, but.
Yeah, I guess what, you know, the hearing and the meeting, people, you know, people knew what the, what was gonna be at the annual meeting and that. And JJ did an excellent job of informing the voters of what they were voting on in the overall budget, he was very specific so that it was transparent. And then the board, or, or whoever, I guess, was kinda going back forth here, who pulled the trigger, didn't listen to the voters' wishes.
Well, I don't, I, I mean, the, the budget meeting.
He was very, he was.
That's fine, I'm just, I don't remember the specific, I don't remember the specific language, but I, I remember sitting here through board meetings. That's fine, I'm just, I don't remember the specific, I don't remember the specific language, but I, I remember sitting here through board meetings, after this had come out several times, and during the budget committee, admitting that this isn't something that the board, this isn't, you can, you can put the money there.
Exactly, no, that's right, and that's what I guess will light up.
But, but. But there was gonna be further discussion on.
Whether the budgets are vote, or, or, I mean, but, um, Vance, you sat there during the budget hearing, and told us, I don't know the exact words till you said, the board would never get, not honor that, um.
I don't, I don't know, saying that.
I think it was, uh, something along the lines, or I think there'd be very, if the administration didn't, you know, follow the will of the budget committee and the people to vote.
Yeah, your budget hearing, I'm sorry, the, the school district hearing also was a, a very individualized reputa- requisitation of the budget hearing. Um, the budget hearing, there was great discussion by the board, and a few committee members were there in support of that, and I can tell you that several board members, me being one, challenged you guys, we should secure a budget, give us more money, we'll spread it, and not a single budget committee member wanted to do that. But that's not a conversation that's, that took place at school district, um, had we been given more money, we would have spread more money equally, or, or maybe we wouldn't be having this conversation, maybe there would be twenty-five for this group and twenty-five for that group, I think I threw out the number.
But I guess that was.
Sixty-five, Scott McIntyre said, well, where are you giving me sixty-five? I said, I don't know, I'm just being hypothetical, just give us a bigger number and we'll use it.
Yeah, that wasn't the issue, but the hearings, to reach out to other.
But you could have done that, too.
Could have, right, could have, could have been them who've gone as far as, and then the, the contracts, the teachers had, gave them more for their contract years up, right? You could have done a lot of things, but, I mean, could have.
Well, it's, it's clearly, obviously, I mean, that's a, we could go on, we could go on.
Yeah, I think we don't need to go back there, because, right, I don't, I don't wanna do that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would, I would advocate that we put the, the twenty-five thousand back in next year, and it takes two years to get to the number that you guys want to get to, so that it's done in a more equitable fashion, and everybody feels good about it, you know, and, and, and that's, and it takes an extra year to do that, I think we would be happy with that.
Well, that's.
This was a complete reversal of any other conversation we had in the prior year budget, where we were trying to get a nickel or ten cents back in for the same people, so let's just blow it down, take two years and get there, and everybody's gonna be happy.
I just wanted an explanation on how we got to this.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we have bright assets, so we're, um, no, I'm not trying to reinvent, I'm just, I don't know what.
Sure, yeah.
Anything else, or anything else?
Just one, one thing that I brought up before, and it's, now, it was two years ago that I looked at this, all right, but for the benefit of Jay, who wasn't here, and I'm sorry, I don't even.
Karen, please.
Karen, thank you, um, K through twelve, looking at all the K through twelve schools in the state. This is the third largest per, per student, spending in the state, the other one being Moltenborough, and the next one's Sunapee, I don't remember which one is first and which one is second, all I know is we're third, and we don't have the tax base that those two towns have. But we're, we got an eight million dollar budget for three hundred and five, three hundred and ten kids, whatever it happens to be right now, the third most expensive in the state, and, you know, although, you know, we're educating the kids, we have a, we have a Rolls-Royce budget, but a Chevy Impala, you know, education coming up, if we're giving you eight million dollars, I'll give you, I'll give you ten million dollars if you wanna increase that education standard to attend to, to, to a Rolls-Royce.
Well, I think it might be pretty unfair statement, but.
I think, I'm sorry, parent of two kids here, I think the education is really, really good, I know you didn't mean to say that it's not a good education, um, so, I would agree.
I'm not saying it's not a good education, I'm saying it's not the best it could be for eight million dollars.
But if we went to take that percentage, and you wanna, if you wanna roll us back to a number that makes sense for the amount of kids, then we could, we'd have three hundred thousand dollars in no school. So, we have, because we're a small place, yes, we have small amount of students, but we still have an operating cost for the facility, no matter what, we can't, how are you gonna save a bunch of money, you gotta get rid of classrooms? I'm just curious, I, 'cause if, I, where I grew up, there was a school that had graduating classes of three, so does that mean that their, their operating budget should have been forty thousand dollars? Like, so long as we're, I mean, I know we can cut the budget, but comparing us because of the amount of students, saying that we're paying a lot for each kid, we're high-paying for the amount of students we have, but we still need to have actually a pretty high budget, because we have a big facility that we have to take care of.
Well, it's, it's not just that, we still need to have this, this, this.
I mean, maybe I'm totally wrong, but if you have a hotel.
There's an entire infrastructure that any school district's required to have, whether you have fifty kids in it or three thousand, as far as superintendents and all these sorts of things, and some of those things are expensive, and that, you know, that doesn't, it isn't, it's expensive, it's an expensive school district. Um, but, but there were times prior to this board where we went in a different direction, and people weren't happy with that, and they decided then that they'd rather pay more and bring it all in-house, and that's where we're at, so, it is what it is, I mean, we've tried the other ways, and people weren't happy that way, too, and that was before me, but.
Hey, Pat, I would agree with you, it's a, it's a hefty budget for the small community, um, and unfortunately, as long as we're keeping all of them here in this town, there's, there's really no easy way to bring it down.
Well, I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten into this, involved in this discussion, but there is a substantial growing fraction in Woodstock that wants to send them to Plymouth, that would rather bust the kids in Woodstock to Plymouth than send them here. So, I'm just saying, if, I don't think it'll ever go anywhere, but I'm saying, there is, there is a group that would like to see that.
Yes.
Right.
That, that could be the direction someday, I mean, it's gonna get to a point, you know, um, but it's gonna be the community that makes that decision as a whole, you know.
Right, and the point is gonna come. Wait, do you say you have to build a new building to put a second floor on, that's, that's when it's gonna break?
Yeah, I, I'm not in disagreement.
Well, the involvement hasn't been going up, has it? I mean, what's projected, I mean.
Roughly the same, it has flaws in the same areas.
Three, three-ten, it's always white in that range.
Yeah, so.
No, it's no housing, I'm sorry, there's no housing in, like, Woodstock anymore, there's no new housing going on.
It's all, it's all taken up.
It's too expensive.
Well, this was a great conversation, but, um, we, uh.
I don't know enough about the budget to even make an educated, educated statement on that, so.
It's how simple it all sounds.
No, and, and it isn't, and, I don't know, I.
Wait until the end of the year, try to fill out the.
Maybe I can.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll take it. I'll take it.
On favor, I.
Aye, aye.